Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the special meeting of the Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would ask staff if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will do the roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Okay. With that, would those who are able, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into the heart of the meeting, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Mike Skreg to, again, explain how this is going to work today.
Thank you, Mayor Hoppick. We have an alternate format that we've been using for a while now, so just need to do a little bit of housekeeping to make sure all the technology's working. So we've got a staff person dialed in and monitoring outside of the room. So first I need to verify, Scott, can you hear me on the phone?
Yes, I can.
Okay. For those listening at home, we discussed this, I think, at the last meeting about whether we were going to continue this format. And since the mass gathering limitation is at 15, and we still don't know, and we represent about 10 people in the room as it is, and we can't guarantee what kind of attendance we're going to have, we're continuing to make public participation available by calling in and participating on a conference call, bridge system, rather than opening the meetings up just yet. So for the public to participate in that format, we've got a handful of things going on. We've got a conference call that they can dial into, which is the call that I just verified with Scott is working. We also have, they can watch on Salina Media Connection, on cable TV. Scott, is that working?
Yes, it is.
They can also watch on Salina Media Connection's online website. Scott, is that working?
Yes, it is.
And then, I think I've been misspeaking, I don't know how many meetings in a row now, referring to it as Facebook Live, but I guess it's actually a YouTube feed that the city is doing. But we have a city feed as well. And Scott, is that working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So all those forms of technology are available. The way for a citizen to participate in a public forum format would be on the conference call. And I'll give that number out in case someone's listening but doesn't have that number. That is 785-621-0800. They will be prompted to enter a participant ID number, which is 782-956. They will also be prompted to give their name, which serves to announce them as they enter the call. And then after they give their name, they can, they need to press the pound sign. I've got the setting set off, set up, so that that announcement doesn't go off as people call into the, to the call. I'm able to monitor the calls on a software on the laptop here. So when we take citizen comment, people will be prompted to press star nine. That'll create an icon on the screen where I can see that a person wishes to address you. I can take them off of mute. They'll have the opportunity to speak to you about the topic at hand, and then put them back on mute, and we can move on to the next speaker. In the event that we have need for an executive session, and there's not one scheduled on today's agenda, but in general, if there were need for an executive session, rather than adjourn to a separate room like we might typically do because of the size of the room, we would stay in this room. The conference call will be placed on mute. Cable feed would be, have an announcement and not give audio or visual of the meeting, of the executive session meeting. The YouTube live feed would also be placed on mute. We'd conduct the executive session. The conference call would stay live, so callers could stay on, essentially on hold on the conference call. Then when we came out of the executive session, back into open session, we'd fire up all those technologies. The conference call will be taken off of mute. The cable feed, both on cable TV and the online feed, would be returned to an audio and video feed. And the city's YouTube live feed would also return to an audio and video feed. So one last time, in case anybody had to run for a paper and pencil, the call-in number is 785-621-0800. And the participant ID number is 782-956. And the callers will be prompted to announce their, their name. They don't necessarily have to do that, but they do have to hit the pound sign to be placed into the conference call. And at that point, they'll, they'll be in the conference call. They'll show up on my screen, and I'll have the opportunity to then assist you in taking public comment as the meeting goes on. So I think we've confirmed all the technologies up and running, and explained our process. And that's all I have to cover, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay, with that, we will move into public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, 3.1.
Item 3.1 is a public hearing to consider an application to be submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce for small cities' community development block grant funds under the CV Economic Development and/or Meals Program.
Okay. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. I believe, Mr. Driscoll, you have some information for us.
Yes, I'd be happy to share the staff report with you. Thank you very much, commissioners, for making yourselves available for this special meeting. Time is of the essence. We got notified just about a week and a half ago about some monies that had become available through the CDBG grant program. That stands for Community Development Block Grant. As you may remember, we received one in 2017 and just wrapped that up with the depot. And so we are at least fresh on the CDBG bandwagon, and are familiar, and have a good working knowledge of this grant program. These monies are CDBG CV dollars, as in coronavirus, and are specifically identified as part of some of the CARES money identified by the feds that have been moved over into HUD, who administers the CDBG program. And they have provided that to the Kansas Department of Commerce. Commerce then reached out to cities and counties that qualify. We are a qualifying community because we are a nonentitlement community. That means that these monies are available for everybody but Kansas City, Wichita, Topeka, Lawrence, Leavenworth, Manhattan, Overland Park, and all of Johnson County. Those monies available to those communities not mentioned would be a little over $9 million. So it's a significant amount of money. More particularly, the amount of money that we can apply for, and the maximum amount, I should say, are in two categories. The first category is economic development, and that is for a maximum of $300,000. The second category is for meal programs, and that is $100,000. So we would apply for a total of $400,000. To break down some of the details for you, the city is applying separately from Saline County. Both communities qualify. If Saline County is to be awarded, the monies they receive, if we are also awarded, cannot be used in the city of Salina. So there's essentially no kind of double up on funding for the city. If we're both awarded, then our monies would be spent directly, of course, in the city, and county dollars would need to be spent outside the city. We were notified this morning that the county is applying for the $300,000 in economic development, but not the food funding, which we are proposing to apply for the food funding and economic development. There is no application scoring. A lot of times in grant applications, there are certain points awarded for amount of match dollars or number of partners you have, or other varying qualities. This is, is not a scored application. This money is first come, first served, hence the hustle to get this meeting scheduled, to get in there and get our application in. When the monies are gone, the monies are gone. So there's an urgency to this, and that is from Department of Commerce because these monies are meant to be emergency relief related to COVID. Department of Commerce is taking these applications digitally, and they've set a goal of 15 days for notification. I do feel they are watching that, because I was in there last week when we were preparing things, just seeing how the application submittal would go, which then kind of created our user account. And 20 minutes later, got an email saying, hey, do you know your application isn't complete? And so they're clearly watching it, and I think ready for those applications, which is, is important in understanding how quickly this could turn around. We have been discussing this with North Central Regional Planning Commission. They have, they are certified CDBG grant administrators, and we previously worked with them on our last CDBG. I think there's a good relationship there. And with staffing and things like that, the way they are right now, I think that additional assistance just to kind of bolster our process is excellent. Cole McDaniel, who is with North Central Regional Planning Commission, is our assigned regional liaison. I have a good relationship with her, and I think it would be helpful to have them as part of this grant application process. And they have been discussing with us information they've been getting, basically discussing with all of their region, but things that they've gotten from Department of Commerce to help with the application process. If awarded the grant, there is 10% of the award, or up to $15,000, that's set aside for administrative costs, very typical with a CDBG grant. So this is, I think, for staff probably, and I think most communities, the most challenging part of this grant is the money is meant to be given to the cities, and then which we would distribute the monies through basically a micro grant program. The question is, how? Right now, Department of Commerce has told us that they are working up mock, basically loan applications that we would be able to customize for our community that could help with that processing of getting those out, businesses turning them back in. We review them, approve them, those types of things. There are more than one way to, to approach that, depending on the amount of money we get, number of businesses that are interested, things like that. It is our staff's recommendation at this point is to apply and get the monies, because we need to get in that line. But between now and hopefully receiving the monies, and when we come back to you for acceptance of the grant funds, and if we were to use North Central Regional Planning Commission as an administrator, we would need to have an administration contract, is at that time, we would propose options for you to choose from related to how you would like to essentially dole out the micro grants, scoring criteria, review style, those types of things. Staff anticipates whatever, however the money is divided out, the administration of that, we would like to make digital, either through Seamless Docs, or possibly even Llama, of having materials turned in by the businesses, such as their receipts, or proof of how they're using those dollars. It's much easier than getting caught in some staff member's email and having some pretty distinct deadlines of submit your stuff here, get your checks issued here, get the money turned around there, start the whole process over again. Having just done this, it can get a little tedious if you got lots of different people turning in things at different times. And I think there, there's some reasonable expectations that could make that possible for us to administer this grant. Because staff has talked about that internally. You know, we get this money. Are we able to get it out successfully? And what kind of, I don't know, staff energy is needed to help administer this. But we think it's very possible, and the dollars are very much needed. And that leads to the narrative discussion that I've discussed in the staff report, along with eligibility, activities, and award. As I mentioned, there's two categories, economic development and meal programs. I'm going to talk a little bit more about economic development at first because it's, I've got some pretty distinct lines drawn. Of economic development, there's kind of two types, based on business size. So you have businesses that are basically less than five full-time employees. And of those, their employees have to meet LMI. The Department of Commerce has an LMI survey that will help, and that's a great example of how North Central Regional Planning Commission could help us, is you have to qualify the employees within those businesses. The next category under economic development is for bigger businesses, and that's six employees to 50 full-time employees. And the reason we distinguish again, and that LMI component is still there, is when you look down into the activities and awards, the activities are the same. I mean, the, the heart of this grant is to be able to provide monies to provide up to six months of inventory, and to be able to keep your employees. Now, how much dollars per employee and the total overall amount you can get is really based on the size of that business. So for the smaller businesses or five or less FTEs, you can get up to $25,000 per job retained, for a maximum of $30,000 per applicant, so per business. For the larger 60 to 50, I'm sorry, 6 to 50 FTEs, you can get up to $35,000, so an additional $10,000 per job retained, for a maximum of $50,000 per applicant, or business, I should say. There are little less details on the meal programs. I think the biggest thing for us to understand within the city of Salina is the LMI component, and that stands for low to moderate income. That is a number that is recognized through HUD. We often talk about it when we talk about housing and things like that. We have 10 census tracts within the city of Salina. Four of them are LMI qualified. So the activities within meal programs would have to be done within those LMI tracks. But in just talking with some of the meal program providers, and we've talked with several that are noted in the narrative attached, I also talked with Rosie from Meals on Wheels this morning, and just talking about how, how the services they're providing, being able to recognize those geographical constraints, and all of them seem up to the challenge, and being able to do that if they are able to get these monies. The narrative, as I said, describes quite a bit about our community, and that was one of the main components asked for in this grant application, is really trying to understand how COVID has impacted our local businesses and our citizens through their need for food and meals. Eric Brown with the Chamber of Commerce has been excellent in helping us to get results from some of the surveying that they've been doing, and their business retention interviews, to add to the narrative regarding economic impacts of COVID on our local businesses. And like I said, spoke with several organizations regarding food meal programs, Meals on Wheels, St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, and Catholic Charities, Ashby House, Food Bank, really trying to get an understanding of their impact, and making sure that these dollars, making sure, I should say, that the state through our application would know that these dollars are well-used and well-needed. So I won't get into a terrible amount of details, because I think the narrative speaks for itself. Finally, that brings us to the objective of today's meeting. We need to officially hold this hearing, which we're doing, so taking any additional comments, then closing that out. And if the city commission chooses to move forward, we would need to approve Resolution 20-7835, which is certifying the legal authority to apply for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce, and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application. And of course, staff is available if you choose to do something else, such as have us make an amendment, come back at a different date, or choose to decline. We are here to serve. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Driscoll?
I think that they're prob, Commissioner Hodges here, by the way. Probably all unanswerable, but I'm just going to throw them out there anyway. Do you have any sense, Lauren, of how many communities are in the queue ahead of us? Because it sounds like we, with the public notice, we've gotten this turned around probably as quickly as we could, unless a community doesn't have a local newspaper, and then I don't know how they get around that requirement. But do you have any sense of, you know, where we're at in, in terms of priority?
I don't know in terms of priority. Do I think we're doing well on time? Yes. And I, I think the state would be really surprised to not see us apply. We're, we're just under the threshold to be a nonentitlement city.
Yeah.
Because entitlement starts at 50,000.
Right.
So we're probably the biggest city, if not close to, applying for these dollars. I think we've moved quickly. I think we have well-demonstrated need. And there are some constraints. If you've already received some of the emergency coronavirus dollars, you may not be able to apply. We've checked, and we are not in that category. So we are applicable that way. So you may have some communities that would have applied but can't because they've already taken some of the emergency dollars.
Gotcha.
That's helpful. And I was in a passing conversation, but feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, and I believe Eric Brown from the Chamber's on the line and may address you in a bit. But if I remember correctly, Eric Brown and Mitch Robinson from the Economic Development Organization participated in a, kind of a conference call the state put on about this. And I think they said there were 246 or 264 participants on that call. There were, there were quite a few that acknowledged that the pandemic has caused problems for their newspaper, which then precluded them from being able to meet the publication requirements, and they had concerns about whether they could be eligible to apply. And taking into account the turnaround time for the, the journal, this is pretty much the earliest date we could get the public hearing scheduled. So I think we're moving about as quick, we're certainly moving as quickly as we could, and I think that probably places us right at the, at the lead of the pack.
Good, good. That's, that's great to hear. Yeah, we want to be first in line for that. Commissioner Hodges here again. Is there a deadline for, with, when everybody has to submit their applications, or is it just kind, like you said, it just gets spent down and spent down and spent down until there's no money left? So...
First come, first served. It says it right in the material.
Okay.
We all had to take a little double tape. We're like, does it really say that?
It still feels like there needs to be a deadline.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, but, okay. And then, just a couple more questions. And this is probably something that's going to, we're going to work through in, in the weeks ahead. But the role of the North Central Regional Planning Commission, given that your department in particular is one of the ones that's very short-staffed at the moment, would there be an opportunity to, for North Central Regional Planning Commission to perhaps take on a, a greater role in helping to administer this, or helping to go through applications that are received?
Yeah. So we've talked about this in fairly good depth with Emily, who's now the Executive Director of North Central Regional Planning Commission, and Nicole. We will have to bring our contract to you guys as part of that grant agreement if we do choose and are able to get these monies. And one of the things that we've identified that we would slightly alter from our other ones is, is recognizing our community size and needing additional help in this. And so it would be my anticipation of them helping to, with direction from us, of course.
Right.
Creating the application, maybe hosting where it's at, helping people to get that filled out and get that turned in, and then reviewing that with us. And then also help with the closing of the grant. They're helping with the application of the grant. What I can't ever give to somebody else to do is, at the end of the day, somebody in the city, and it's usually me, has to review the finalized materials, and I have to sign and submit those to the state. And so I still have to look at all those. I have to take them in. They have to be logged. And then there's a little bit of a dance between us and finance, where I have to find out the monies have come in, and then send our materials out to get confirmation from the state to then issue the checks out. And having done this for the last two years, I've kind of got the timing down. I think that's where we can digitize some of these things. It's like, once we've chosen who's getting the monies, and that's done, and we could use North Central's help to do that, is there's a central place in which you must submit your materials, and they have to be submitted by this date, or you have to wait till the next time we cut checks. And some of that's...
Yeah, if you've got, if you've got the reimbursement schedule on there, then, yeah, nobody's got, nobody's surprised.
Correct. So I anticipate some of those things being in the application materials when it comes down to us delivering the micro grants. And so kind of from the front end and the back end, getting some of the North Central Regional Planning Commission's help. But in that middle, once we've got everybody selected and we're issuing checks, some of that is just creating the system in which people drop the stuff off, we confirm we've got it, and then we issue the checks.
So if I can add one clarification, Mike Skreg here. We haven't talked about this a whole lot, but it looks like the, the cost of North Central Regional Planning Commission's services is an eligible expense out of the grant, and it looks like it's capped at 10% of the award, or 15,000, whichever is less, which would keep it below the spending authority of the city manager. So unless the provisions of the grant itself require governing body approval, it may be possible to enter into that agreement with North Central without having to bring it back to you as the governing body. We'll just have to take a look at that.
But we typically do that when we do grant acceptance, like we did with our last CDBG. And I, I also threw out a few names, I think Eric threw out a few names, of people we know who are good grant administrators. If North Central is looking for some help right now, because, yes, we're probably the biggest community within their region, but it just takes two or three businesses to have this to be quite a bit of paperwork.
Absolutely.
Especially for smaller municipalities that maybe haven't done these in a while.
And especially because Emily's new in her role as Executive Director of North Central Regional Planning Commission, so she's doing a lot of work now that Doug has transitioned out to, I'm sure, to get up to speed on all of his normal responsibilities, let alone additional responsibilities that this would entail.
Sorry to keep jumping in, Mike Skreg again. To Ms. Driscoll's point about complexity, if I understand correctly, the LMI component for a business and their employees extends to their families? So part of that verification's going to, and, and the LMI threshold is per size of family, whether it's a, you know, two-person, three, four, five, whatever the case may be. So there's, the information that's going to have to be provided and reviewed is in a greater level of detail than you might first think. So that just, I think that's going to catch a few people by surprise that are applying, and it's just a regulation that we have to observe.
We anticipate that that, typically, when we get a CDBG grant, there's an environmental survey, and it's usually probably one of the more time-consuming parts of the grant. That's where basically the environment, as in everything that would affect the grant, has to be evaluated, inventoried, and an additional public comment put out. That is not required as part of this, but there is a LMI survey required, based on each of those employees. But that is done and verified through the employer, and that was recognized by both Emily and Nicole as something that, if you were to bring North Central Regional Planning Commission on as the administrator, is kind of one of those key tasks that they would take care of. And that would be very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Franz? Commissioner Franz, probably more questions that you can't answer. But I would note that the economic development funds are limited to replacement of needed inventory. And that strikes me as a pretty serious limitation, depending on the type of business. Obviously, if you're a restaurant, your inventory is, is spoilable, and to the extent that you couldn't take actions to preserve it, you may need to spend money to replace it. If you're in a service business, or in a kind of business where the, the inventory is less likely to go away, you've probably got the same inventory that you had when you closed. I don't know, a law firm, for example, or, or whatever. So I guess the, the question is, that kind of limits who might be able to participate if inventory is, as I'm interpreting it, to be material held for resale, or material that you use in preparing whatever product it is. You know, have you, has that topic come up in any of the conversations with Commerce as to how that might be handled?
Yes. I, there, I think you've mentioned two types of categories, but there are also those businesses that have been exceptionally taxed during this time, that had backup inventory that is also gone. So they're trying to replenish, not, not necessarily like a spoilage situation, but just so low on inventory that they're looking to get a little bit of catch-up on some of that, and buying themselves some time. I think, like in many disaster situations, when dealing with these types of grants, for these types of emergency monies, there are things that we're learning kind of every day. I can tell you, there are several questions I probably posed last week, that more than several other conversations and phone calls, to the point of, apply, you're qualified, we'll figure it out later. And I don't mean to, to throw anybody under the bus, but if you've ever worked through disaster stuff, the objective is, are you, and, and this whole thing is set up like that. I mean, we're no matching funds.
Yeah.
No scoring. It's very limited on who qualifies. And basically, we got to prove we're impacted, we, we want the money, and that we're able to distribute it and can do good things with the money.
Okay. The other question is, is kind of related, say, you're a, a food service business. And some food service businesses stayed open throughout this period, but you could order on, by telephone, walk in, or have it delivered to the curb. Reopening becomes a little bit of a problematic definition, because they were never truly closed. So if somebody had reduced their business or changed their method of business to that extent, would they still be eligible for these, these monies?
I think when we talk about reopening, we are talking about reopening to the public. And the, and part of these monies is the impact of the stay-at-home orders, in a way, shutting, shutting down the economy in a certain way. And so generally, as those restrictions are starting to lift, these monies are considered reopening monies. So I think even if you were serving food during the stay-at-home order... So I think even if you were serving food during a stay-at-home order, you still weren't open for that typical public business. So this would allow you to put things back in check.
Yeah, I would certainly hope that's the way it would be interpreted, because obviously those sorts of businesses were doing some business, but it was at a, probably at a greatly reduced level through that period. And I just want to make sure that they would be included, or if they're not included, they have some upfront notice that, you know, "Sorry, this isn't for you." So I'd be very interested in getting some follow-up on that before we, you know, not before we apply, but certainly at some point before we start administering the funds.
And I should mention Brad Anderson with Arts and Humanities has been doing a lot of assisting with our grant applications. And Brad was also on that call that Eric was on, and so we've been doing a lot of kind of tag-teaming to get this information, because it's literally just, it's kind of coming out on a daily basis. But from what I've heard, both from staff at Commerce and through those types of phone calls and materials we've gotten out, they're considering reopening, as in the lifting of overall sanctions, not necessarily that day-to-day business.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's certainly a clarification we're going to want, so that an applicant doesn't go to all the trouble to fill out the application and find out they're ineligible.
And I guess that's my point behind asking the question, is it just strikes me, there are some definition things there that before we implement this, we ought to be very clear on.
Commissioner Davis. On page 24, the last page of the handout, it's discussing opening the bids. I'm assuming these are bids from local organizations that are requesting funding. There's a requirement that, I guess, either the bid applicants or the public be included in the process, but there has to be the capability for closed captioning, communication. It's, and it didn't say preferred, looked like it was an absolute requirement. I don't know if that's something that we will have the capability, assuming we're not, if we're still meeting like this.
Yes, so just to clarify, Commissioner Davis, I believe you're referring to the CDBG CV frequently asked questions. And the last question in that handout says, "Can we conduct formal bid openings virtually?" And I think that response is pretty standard to the types of activities that occur within CDBG. And depending on how a community handles this, you may need to do bid openings. I'm literally trying to run through how we would probably handle this through microloans. I'm not sure we'd have a bid opening. It's kind of like the same thing above with the environmental review. Those are kind of typical questions that are asked with CDBG. We're not hiring somebody to build housing or anything like that, so I can't imagine we're going to have a bid opening with this. I don't know if we've had a bid opening since COVID.
Not that I'm aware of. And to build on Ms. Driscoll's point, I think that is question number one. Question number two is probably, do we need to do it virtually, or could we do it in an open meeting format? We're going to have to figure out where we're at on mass gatherings and some of those numeric limits. And if it becomes necessary to do it virtually, Sline Media Connection has, within the week, informed me that they have closed captioning capability. We're still verifying in what format and how that becomes available. So if question number one and question number two lead us to the need for a virtual bid opening and closed captioning, the technology might be there to facilitate that as well.
I'd like to just follow up that question. Let's just say you receive 100 bids, which would obviously...
But we wouldn't get, there's nothing to bid on. We'll receive 100 applications.
100 applications, I'm sorry, 100 applications, which would, I'm sure, strip any amount of money.
I love that number.
Right. Is this a first-in, first-awarded type of gifting, or are you, you being us generically, going to score, rate the request, or will it be first come, first served?
So maybe to answer this in two parts. One I just want to clarify is applicants are not bids. So bids we activate when we are hiring somebody on behalf of the city to go and do something for us. We have in the past, we've hired North Central Regional Planning Commission, because it's such a low dollar amount, handled that through a contract when you approve the grant. But we wouldn't be hiring anybody else to do anything. We have these monies in which we need to distribute. It's kind of like the ESG grant, that emergency services grant, where we have money from the state. We would say, we would kind of make a call out to applicants, who would then fill out applications based on the criteria we sent. And that's kind of where I start to answer the second part of that question, is how would we do that? What would they do? Who would get it? I'm pretty prepared that if we get these monies and we bring this back to you to accept the grant, to have in there is two or three options for you. Here's how staff is presenting option one, two, and three, on how you could basically disperse with these dollars. Which one would you like? Or some version thereof? And then we would administer that. And that, I think what you're alluding to, Commissioner Davis, could be a first come, first served, some kind of maximum amount, or based on a certain criteria that would lead to an amount, those types of things. But those are allowed to be decided at the city level.
After the fact, okay.
Mike Scragg here. Maybe getting ahead of myself, but I think it's going to be in our own best interest to have some predetermined criteria that we communicate on the front end in anticipation of having more applications than funds and needing to have, you know, an objective basis to score them and make a decision about awards. So as Ms. Driscoll described, I think we need to flesh that out and bring that back to you for your ratification, and then we'll administer it.
And typically, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but just to finish up, and typically when we do something like that, and you've given us our criteria, we take those applications in, we score them, finalize them, and bring that down to that final group, I think what would be the most appropriate thing is to bring that back in front of the body and have you bless that as that group, saying, "Yep, this is our grant. These are our micro grants. Go forward and administer from there." And I think that would make the most sense.
If I may, Brad Anderson's on the line and has virtually raised his hand. I think he might have a point to add. Brad, unmuted you. Did you want to add to this conversation?
I would like to just affirm what Lauren had said about that and also what was just discussed. I think that there will be adequate time pending successful funding of the grant for North Central Regional Planning, the Salina Chamber of Commerce, and the city to be able to come together with a clear understanding of the types of grants, the awards, and the distribution of those funds in a way that clearly indicates in advance of the application rather than after the fact. So I think that there will be adequate time for all of those questions to be addressed.
Mayor Hoppick here. And I guess my question partially is a question, partially a comment, but these are emergency funds, so we hope to get them out in a timely manner. So I guess when you're looking at this, I would think there would be a timeframe that we'd want applications, you know, submitted so that they can be reviewed. Also, is there a timing or as far as how long we have these funds to be dispersed out? I mean, there's no, is there, do they have to be dispersed within 60, 90 days of receiving them or be turned back in or anything? I didn't see anything on that.
The state hasn't given that number. What I'm understanding would happen, and I'm kind of relating it to our other CDBG experience, is essentially an amount is bestowed upon us. That's not just automatically handed over to us and put in our bank account. It's kind of held at the state. We do some work. We turn stuff in. They verify and send us an amount of money, and then we can cut checks. So for example, with the depot, they would get through a certain level of construction, send in construction verification documents. I would sign those. Nicole and I would verify that everything is being done, send that to the state. They would send us a chunk of money that matched that log, and then the city would cut a check to the contractors.
So not all businesses being created equal. There'll be some that'll be, will be, you know, before others and getting submitted. So basically, if we had some that we felt were worthy, we could submit X number of dollars, then we could submit another request two weeks later or whatever. Is that, is that what I heard you say? Or does it all have to be submitted at one time?
I don't know if that's what I said, but I'm following you, and I think I could do that, yeah. And, you know, and that's, I think, maybe one of the reasons in the economic development category, they've broken it up into kind of two levels of business. There's a level sophistication that comes when you've got 60 to 50 employees, and a different level with five or less employees. And maybe we do need to kind of have a different level of sophistication for those two and a little bit of a different timing. And if, if we've been awarded, since there is no end date that the states give us, let's say we put our first call to applications out, we do two weeks, since we're trying to kind of hustle on this, based on how you guys decide, we only end up giving $150,000 away. We may then need to do a second call. And I think that's very possible.
Mike Scragg here. If you look at the grant award amounts that the guidance contemplates, and let's just say essentially $30,000 per applicant, that's 10 awards for the $300,000 maximum grant award that we might receive. I don't know if 30,000 is the right number, but just to give you a sense of kind of the number that we might be able to award.
But they have to have the LMI employees. So, and I think that that's a little bit of the balance there.
And you may have to, Mayor Hoppick here, you may have to work with businesses to figure out if they're, if they're, they fall within that category. Another question I had, one of my, was going to be as a county applying, which you said yes. The $300,000 for economic development, that's 300 for city, 300 for county? It's not 300 total that gets dispersed between the two of us? Is that correct?
That is correct. So 300 for the county to spend in the county, but not in the city of Salina if we are awarded.
Right.
If we weren't awarded, they could spend some of those dollars in the city of Salina. But if we are equally awarded, that is 300 to be spent in the city of Salina and 300 by the county to be spent in the rest of the county.
Right, okay.
And I'm speculating, this, Mike Scragg again, I'm speculating a little bit, but that's not to say that the state doesn't have discretion to say, you know, "We think the right number, combined right number for Saline County is X, and we're going to split..." I don't know that it's an all or nothing award of 300 to both entities. They could kind of apply some discretion.
Mayor Hoppick, you're following Ms. Driscoll's comment about us being the largest city and probably largest county. I would think when they throw those numbers out there, we would perhaps qualify for as much of that as possible, but...
I'm optimistic about an award. I just, you know, they may look at it collectively or in some combined fashion.
Commissioner Davis, two other short questions. Are these monies grants such as to buy inventory, or are they reimbursements once the owner has spent the money to replenish their inventory?
They are reimbursements, but in typically municipal world, a grant means you don't have to pay it back. Like, these aren't loans. These are true grants, but you're going to have to spend some of that money upfront to get that. Or I think, this is the kind of level of detail we just don't have because it's such a new grant, but there was some discussion about, for instance, purchasing inventory that's quite a ways off, of being able to purchase that on credit, submit that, and still be able to get it. I'm going to...
Well, that's the question. If a small business owner, we'll just use a restaurant for an example, needs to buy $5,000 worth of food, but they don't have $5,000 to buy it and get reimbursed, would this program be of any value to them?
I guess I can't answer that question quite yet, because I think we're trying to get through some of those details. And those being, the state is answering that, not necessarily the city.
I'm speculating, but it wouldn't surprise me at all if the business in that circumstance asked us for some formal verification of the grant award, so they could go to a lender, demonstrate that if, you know, given a short-term loan and our turnaround time, that they could get reimbursed and carry that.
And I don't have any examples in mind here, but are state or city, county employees or their families excluded from this program?
Not that I know of.
So Brad Anderson's raised his virtual hand again. I'm going to unmute him. Brad, are you there?
A couple of responses. One is that the teleconference that I participated in, it was acknowledged that these grants would continue to roll until the funds had either been expended or a municipality or county determined that they couldn't spend anymore and return the balance to the state for redistribution somewhere else. Second, the, one of the commissioners had talked about helping a business understand their LMI, and the state does have some guidelines and some questions that can be asked by the business or employer, and that will help them to be able to determine, but it's the employer's responsibility and the application process that they have to go through to determine, and there's some very specific questions that they will have to ask their employees, because it doesn't just involve what their individual employee is earning, but their household income. So there are some very detailed guidelines that will go with this. And then finally, the question about state and local businesses, anyone who lived in Saline County, or Salina, if it was an employee, a city employee, but they had a business with one to five employees, or a sole proprietor, or were in that larger business with up to 50, I did not see or hear anything that would preclude them from participating.
Thank you, Brad.
Commissioner Franz, one more question. I promise, just one. Is there a start, is there a starting line? In other words, if I opened my business, or reopened my business on June 3, and I spend $2,000 for inventory, the grant is not available until June 10. I'm just making dates up. Am I eligible for the reimbursement for something that I've spent actually before the date of the grant award?
It's not off the top of my head. I want to say that there is a, up to like six-week window prior to, in which you can use these funds to cover past purchases.
There is a look-back period.
Yes, there is a small window.
It will reimburse something that I've done before I've submitted the application.
So Friday, the governor, you know, went into phase two. Somebody was like, "Great, I'm open now." They bought their inventory last week. We get this pulled off here, and we're still in that six-week window. They can, they can retroactively get those expenses covered by this.
All right.
Mike Scragg here, and not, I don't know, discourage conversation, but these are all good questions, but I guess I would ask you, are they factoring into whether you want to apply for this grant or not? I mean, we're going to have to sort all this out, no doubt. I can, I'm hopeful that none of these details would cause you to say that we shouldn't at least try to get the grant, and we'll do our best to sort out the details and administer it on your behalf. If, if we need to go to this level of detail for your approval to proceed, I understand, but if it's...
Mayor Hoppick here. I think it was more just informational, just trying to figure out how this is actually going to work. I'm just glad I'm not the one that has to do it.
I understand. I mean, it's just human nature, but, you know, it's $400,000 for our community. We, you know, we think we ought to try and do what we can within the rules that they give us.
This is public hearing. Do we have anyone else on the line that would like to comment?
If there's any callers that wish to address the city commission, please press star nine. We have one, it shows up as Chamber of Commerce. I assume maybe it's Eric, but you're unmuted, Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mike. You made the correct assumption. I did just want to call in and say thank you to the commissioners and to all at the city that have worked on getting this in front of the city commission tonight and getting together. Much like Mike just said, I think this is an opportunity that we don't want to pass up. And as you can see in the narrative, there is a lot of businesses that cross across the LMI threshold, probably a lot in the travel and tourism side, and also some of the restaurants and hoteliers. And so we know the need is there, and as you have all have heard from the hoteliers in addition, the need is definitely there. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that and appreciate you voting for this and giving us an opportunity to put these dollars to work here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else?
I don't see anyone. Everyone else are the usual suspects.
If there's nothing else, I will close the public hearing and move us into 3.1A. If there's nothing else, I will close the public hearing and move us into 3.1A.
3.1A, Resolution Number 207835, certifying legal authority to apply for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such an application.
Okay. Driscoll, do you have anything to add? I think we've already covered it.
You got everything.
We've got everything you have to get. Okay, any other discussion or comments from the commission? If not, I would accept a motion.
Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Hodges here. I would move that we approve Resolution Number 20-7835, certifying legal authority to apply for the 2020 Kansas Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorize you as the mayor to sign and submit such an application.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick here, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7835. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. With that, that brings to conclusion what we had for our special meeting. I will accept a motion for an adjournment.
So moved, it'll be adjourned.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 4-0. We will see everyone back here next Monday. Thank you, Ms. Driscoll, for your work.
Thank you.